All right. All right, ladies and gentlemen, good evening. I call the city council meeting for Wednesday, March 24th, 2021 to order. As we think about a lot of things that have been going on recently, Colorado here just north of us, we need to contemplate, I think, a lot of, some time for kindness and love into our conversation. So please, as we take a moment of silence, please do that. Thank you, everyone. Alderman Dorman, if you'll please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Alderman Dorman. Brian Crupp, our city clerk, if you would please call the roll. Dunn.
Here.
Dorman.
Here.
McGinnis.
Here.
Lee.
Here.
Gripp.
Here.
Condon.
Here.
Peacock.
Here.
Dickman.
Here.
Jopchen.
Here.
And Ambrose.
Here.
Ten present, Your Honor. Thank you, Brian. So, good evening again, everyone. As we begin, begin the meeting of the city council, I'd like to welcome everybody here in attendance and also those who are viewing on any of their mobile or computer devices. We respectfully welcome your comments and opinions. Please keep in mind that as you talk to the council, you're also sharing your thoughts with your fellow Davenporters and anybody in the region. We're happy that you're participating in your city government and please ask that your participation reflect the common desire to share that everybody believes Davenport is a great place for everyone. At this time, if you have a cell phone or electronic device in here, if you'd at least put it on silent or turn it off, just so it doesn't get in the way of someone talking. If you want to address anybody from the dais here, the mayor's city council, please come to the podium right here. The microphone's above you and you'll have five minutes. Please be respectful of us. We'll certainly be respectful of you. Thank you. Will an Alderman please move approval of the city council meeting minutes for March 10th?
So moved.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good. Ms. Spiegel, city administrator, any update?
Just a reminder that next week is the fifth week of the month, so we will not have any kind of traditional city meetings on Tuesday or Wednesday, but we'll be back to our normal schedule the first week of April.
Thank you very much. Next item, will an Alderman please move approval of the report of the committee of the whole for March 17th, 2021? Move the report.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Very good. Any opposed? Thank you. All right, we have three proclamations this evening. Child Abuse Prevention Month, Junior Achievement Day, and CDBG Week. So I'll read the first one on child abuse prevention month. So proclamation, whereas the city of Davenport reminds us that child abuse can be prevented, and whereas every child deserves to be safe, nurtured, and supported in caring relationships, and whereas everyone has a role to play in preventing child abuse, and all citizens must become aware of the importance of supporting parents to raise their children in a safe and nurturing environment, and whereas too many of our nation's children are exposed to extreme and sustained stress, such as child abuse and neglect, which of course can be devastating to a child's development, and whereas we lay the foundation for children's later growth and development when the entire community takes responsibility for creating healthy environments in which to raise our children, and whereas the children in our community whole have fallen victim to maltreatment, deserve high-quality, evidence-based services delivered by committed and well-supported professionals, and whereas effective child abuse prevention programs succeed because of community partnerships created among families, social service agencies, schools, businesses, law enforcement agencies, faith-based organizations, and other child-serving agencies, and whereas it is easier to build healthy and strong children than repair broken adults. And now therefore, we, Mayor Mike Mattson and the Davenport City Council, do hereby proclaim March 29th, 2021, to April 4th, 2021, as Child Abuse Prevention Week in the city of Davenport and urge all citizens, businesses, and social institutions to dedicate themselves to the task of supporting parents in their critical job of raising safe, healthy children while ensuring the health and safety of all children in Davenport. I move the proclamation.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Very good. And I believe Brooke Hendricks is here. Please come meet me at the podium.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Uh, microphone, yep, there it is. Um, I just want to let the city of Davenport know how much we appreciate this. It is absolutely true that it costs a lot less to raise healthy kids than it does to repair broken adults. So if we can support children in their childhood and support programs that support children, we'll have a healthier, stronger community. We'll save money. That's always important. And we'll have just a more vibrant space to be. There is a lot going on right now, just locally with, with different traumas. A lot of that could have been prevented if families were supported, felt supported, and were not under the stress that they were under currently and then magnified due to the pandemic. So anything we can do to support kids, including getting the word out about Child Abuse Prevention Month and celebrating Child Abuse Prevention Week is huge, and I thank you guys so much for taking that step. So, thank you.
Thank you. And I apologize, Brooke was from the Child Abuse Council. So, thank you very much and all the work you and your organization does. The next proclamation is Junior Achievement Day, and that'll be read by Alderman Peacock. Alderman Peacock, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will tell my fellow colleagues that when I opportunity to present this proclamation, I immediately jumped on this opportunity because this one here is near dear to the heart. This is one organization that I personally was impacted upon. And when I first came in Alderman, I had an opportunity to took a tour of their facility down there and they was going through and educating young people about, you know, life lessons. They had the community center, a replica of a bank, a replica of various businesses. I'm like, wow, this is amazing. So I had to jump on this opportunity to present this proclamation and it's as follows. Whereas the city of Davenport will observe Junior Achievement Day on April 1st, 2021, as an opportunity to recognize and celebrate junior achievement of the Heartland for empowering our communities, youth through all economic success, and whereas junior achievement of the Heartland educational contributions equip our youth to become the next generation of productive employees and self-sufficient citizens to ensure the economic prosperity of Davenport, and whereas junior achievement of Heartland includes opportunities for educators, parents, and community volunteers to connect classroom learning to life after graduation, and whereas it is encouraged to parents, educators, businesses, and other members of the community to join junior achievement efforts to ensure the future successes of the community in which they live. And now, where therefore, we, Mike Mattson and the Davenport City Council, do hereby proclaim April 1st, 2021, as Junior Achievement Day. Sign, Mike Mattson. I move the proclamation. Has been moved and properly seconded, and I believe Doug Nelson is here to accept the proclamation. I'm sorry. All right, that's my second. I got to do the, all in favor?
Aye.
And then pass this, say goodbye to council, thank you.
I'm in favor as well. Absolutely. Absolutely.
So, thank you, Mayor Mattson and Pat for your kind words and everything the council is doing for our city. We're, we're very blessed and lucky to, to have you guys on board. You know, Brooke, thank you for what you said. It is so important that we get in front of these kids when they're young. I mean, we start out with our programs teaching kindergarteners that, you know, wants versus needs. And by the time they're in third grade, they're learning how to budget. So really what we're doing is, is providing a world where, where students can achieve economic empowerment through education. You know, as, as we go and we teach these kids K through 12 about financial literacy, entrepreneurship, and work and career readiness, we see some successes and we see kids graduating, and that's a milestone. That's, that's a winner for us. But where you really see our work at is when those kids cross that finish line, when they cross that graduation stage, and they're trying to determine what career path they're on. You know, some kids are, are going to go right into the workforce and they're going to take that pathway. And we think that's a good thing. And some kids are going to go to college. Some kids are going to enter the trades. You know, there's, there's all these pathways. The, the last pathway we want to see them take is the pathway to their parents' basement. So what we're doing is, is trying to help kids and empower them to be productive, community-minded citizens. I want to thank all the volunteers that are in this room today. If you've stepped into the classroom and done that, we appreciate it. If you supported junior achievement financially, we couldn't do that work without those dollars. It's important. So I just want to say thank you, not only to the council and the mayor, but to the community as well for supporting junior achievement. Truly a difference maker. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. And the last proclamation we have tonight is Community Development Block Grant Week, and Alderman Gripp will read that one. Alderman Gripp.
All right. Thank you, Your Honor. I'll read the proclamation. Whereas the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development implemented the Community Development Block Grant Program in 1974 for the purpose of providing annual funding and flexibility to local communities in an effort to provide safe and affordable housing, as well as suitable living environments and economic opportunities to working families. Whereas the Home Investment Partnership Program implemented in 1990 also provides funding to local communities in an effort to create safe, affordable housing opportunities. Whereas the city of Davenport recognized, recognizes that CDBG and home-funded programs and projects are successful because of the partnerships and collaboration with residents, businesses, and community organizations. Whereas for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2020, over 1,400 Davenport residents received services provided by community organizations and funded in part with CDBG or home funds. Eighty-five households received housing assistance in the form of down payment, rehabilitation, or tenant-based rental assistance, and one small business received a loan. Now therefore, we, Mike Mattson, mayor, and the city council of Davenport, Iowa, do hereby proclaim the week of April 5th, 2021, through April 9th, 2021, as National Community Development Week. In support of these two valuable programs that have made tremendous contributions to the viability of housing stock, public services, and economic vitality of our community dated this 24th day of March, 2021, I move the proclamation. There's a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. The proclamation passes and Bruce Berger from Community Development will come up to accept this proclamation.
Bruce, thanks for everything that you and your department do for the CDBG and home programs. These programs were especially important over the last year with the pandemic. You guys have had an increased workload. You've made a huge impact on the housing and small business in the area. We really appreciate everything you've done for us in the last year. So please accept this proclamation.
Thank you. We're smiling underneath the mask. Uh, just a quick second to say thank you very much, Mayor and council. It, as, as already mentioned, CDBG and home funds, over the years, have impacted so many things, so many things we probably take for granted. And every year, we try to get more creative in finding ways to do that. Traditionally, it's things like our urban homestead program for, it's, it's public service activities like homeless services and services for youth, I already mentioned, that are, that are so important. And rehabs, rental projects, all kinds of things. The last year's, our, our CDBG and, and home with COVID took, took even more. We spun some of those things and so you hear maybe some smaller numbers on how we've accomplished some things, and I think those will rebound, but we did some new activities that we hadn't done before. So it's, it's so important. I appreciate all your efforts in it and, and allowing us to be able to do that work. And, and again, thanks again for this.
Thank you, Alderman Gripp and Mr. Berger. So next we have petitions and communications from council members and mayor. I'll have a couple. So I'll start first, I want to thank Alderman McGinnis, the pro temp for filling in. My wife and I took a little visit somewhere, so appreciate you doing that and thank you for helping me out when, when needed. And then I want to take a, a moment here. Last March, a year ago, right before the pandemic was gone and we, our lives changed. This council, I'm very proud of unanimously approved a resolution against hate. So I just want to remind everyone what we did a year ago and read it and reaffirm that this council stands strong. And so I'm going to read what we did a year ago so that everybody understand that we believe in this and, and take it for granted, take it serious. So resolved by the city council and the city of Davenport. Resolution condemning hate and divisiveness in all forms. Whereas those bent on dividing and sowing the seeds of strife and discord are increasing their efforts. Whereas incidents of hateful acts are being ignored, tolerated, and in some cases condemned in the world, condone, sorry, in the world today. Whereas the dark path of division and hatred begins with identifying and marginalizing the other, and if unchecked, frighteningly quickly, leads to oppression and even maybe genocide. Whereas a great strength and part of the genius of this country has been to evolve with and incorporate into the natural fabric its increasing diversity from many to one. Whereas the city of Davenport and the Quad City area ever strive to be a safe and welcoming community for all, whereas some in our community feel marginalized, under threat, and fearful. And whereas the moment calls for our local leaders to stand up and say no more. Now therefore, it is hereby resolved by Mayor Mike Mattson and the city council of Davenport, Iowa, that the city of Davenport condemns all form of hatred, divisiveness, that the city of Davenport supports and stands with those who are fearful, and the city of Davenport encourages those charged with enforcing the law to ensure that the city is a safe and welcoming community for all. So I just wanted to read that to reaffirm that's still in place and we believe in it and stand by it. So, thank you. And now I see colleagues, Alderman McGinnis.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just wanted to let folks know that there has been a new COVID assistance for renters and homeowners announced. The application process starts on next Monday, the 29th. For renters, there is a eligibility in terms of income. Someone, at least one person in the household that's qualified for unemployment benefits or experienced documented financial hardship due to COVID or can demonstrate a risk of experiencing homelessness or housing instability past due utility or rent notice or eviction notice. Also for homeowners, that will be reopened. Also, this is a short-term program. It will go on until the funds are exhausted or until a new federal program is offered. So please, if you, if you, if you're a friend, a family member may have an issue with this, please let them know about it. There is a pre-check list, so you can go on now and see would I qualify? And all of that information, application is at iowahousingrecovery.com. So please, you can go ahead, try and check and see if you qualified and you can, but you, then it opens up on Monday. So, thank you very much, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman McGinnis. Alderman Lee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've got a couple of things. One is my, the, the monthly Goose Creek meeting is going to be held tomorrow night. And I again want to thank Nevada Lemke and Officer Carver for all their support and help that we get there and, in Goose Creek. I also wanted to say a little bit about COVID vaccinations. There are certain benefits to being old, which I am. So I've been able to be vaccinated twice and I had no side effects. So everyone, every adult is going to be eligible as of April 1. You can sign up when the county gets vaccine, sufficient vaccine. You can go over to the, sign up and then get an appointment at the Sears Building over at the mall. And I understand that the federal government will be opening one at the Old Dix on Elmore. Do you know when that'll open?
I don't know the date, no.
Okay, but it's soon.
That's what I understand.
Yeah, okay. So that'll be another way you can get vaccines. And of course, there's appointments at Hy-Vee, Walgreens, and CVS here in town. And then the last thing, I'm quite active in the Asian community, all the way from Des Moines and up to Cedar Rapids and down here to, to Davenport, Mount Pleasant. And I, but we've had two tragedies in one week, and I don't want to forget the one in Atlanta with the folks that were killed there. I do know that the Asian community deals with this all the time, you know, discrimination, you know, bad language, being used against them, being fearful. So I just want us to, to keep in mind, many of these Asians that I spend time with are American citizens. I would dare most anyone in this room to try to pass the test for citizenship. It's very difficult because I've taught several people and, and I had to look at the back of the card for many of the questions, as well as just having to know English. And the ones that aren't are very often working towards their citizenship. But either way, I just want to remind you about how important it is in support of what Mayor Mattson said. Hate, discrimination, no way to live, and certainly no way to die. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Lee. Alderman Dunn.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just want to take the opportunity to thank the citizens and our staff that came out last weekend to do the corridor cleanup. He made a huge, they made a huge impact. Especially, I've gotten a lot of compliments, especially on the Locust Street and Rockingham Corridors. I just want to say thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Dunn. Alderman Dorman.
Thank you, Mayor Mattson. Since we won't have a meeting next week and then it will be a short time period afterwards, I just want to announce a neighborhood meeting that we are having our, surrounding the 13th Street Bridge. As you guys know, we passed plans to start work on the Elm Street Bridge, but one of the other bridges associated with the railroad was the 13th Street Bridge. And we need the neighbors' input on what they would like to see come of that bridge, how they use it, what they would like to see done with it. And then that's going to help us in our design proposals and as we work towards getting that bridge replaced. So that will be Thursday, April 8th, at 5:30. We will meet at the bridge and hopefully we will have nice weather. I should, not even know now that I said that. And I'll announce it again in two weeks at that meeting, but since that would, it will be the day after next council meeting, so I want to get that on people's calendars if you'd like to attend. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Dorman. Anyone else? Alderman Peacock.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I greatly appreciate it. Is Clay here, by any chance? Can you come to the podium, please? Could you provide an update on the 53rd, 53rd Street? I've been getting a lot of calls about that particular one.
Uh, yes, sir. Clay, Mayor Public Works. So you probably noticed in the past probably three or four weeks, a lot of the work's been going on in between the section between the railroad bridge, so really Tremont to Eastern. That work's been done by utilities, so they're moving their infrastructure out of the way in advance of us. Probably start seeing some of our contractor, the city's contractor, working there probably next week or two, depending on if the rains kind of hold off a little bit.
Can you, can you just share and hopefully for my situation awareness, what's the closure again? I, I can't recall. When it, for completion?
Um, we're looking probably midsummer.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
It is no secret that I, I announced my resignation at the end of April. So I went, I have tentatively scheduled, and more information will follow, award meeting on the 15th of April here in the council chambers at 6 o'clock. Once again, 15th April at 6 o'clock, more information to be provided. The mayor just read off a resolution or proclamation or to talk about, you know, what the council did a year ago. And I would, now, as I listen to it, you know, my ears a little bit different from most people's ears. And I, I hear ancestors, I hear people who look like me say, well, you know, I hear the words, but where are the actions? I'm gonna say that again. I hear the words, but where are the actions? This council had the opportunity to find an investigator for the Civil Rights Commission. If I'm not mistaken, civil rights and hate. So let's not talk the words when, when we have the opportunity to back it up. I'm gonna say that again. Let's not talk the words when we have the opportunity to back it up. Because people are watching what we do. People are watching, people are listening. And I said to the mayor and my friend, the city administrator, we had to write our own narrative. Let's not have people tell us what the city council is doing when we have the opportunity to do so. So the, and my good friend, colleagues, Mike Guster, and a lot of individuals who in this civil rights fight, if you will, and I always tell them, you can tell a lot about municipality. You can tell a lot about a city, about its budget, about their priorities. Well, these are, these are our priorities, but nowhere do you see anything that proclaims to what the mayor just talked about. And I put a pause there, and I put a pause right there. And my colleague, Alderman Judith Lee, beautifully talked about hate. And I will end with this. Hate is hate regardless who the victim is. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Peacock. Anyone else? Okay, moving on, the next item is an approval of all items on the discussion agenda. The first item is a third consideration ordinance for case REZ 2009, being the request of S.J. Russell, LC, on behalf of the Sophie Foster Revocable Trust to rezone the property located at 4607 East 53rd Street to C2 Corridor Commercial District and R-MF Multifamily Residential District. The protest rate is over 20%, requires eight votes for passage. Is there any public with comment? If there is, please come to the podium, okay? And please state, just a reminder for everyone, please state your name, address, or ward. If you're not here, we'd love to know where you're from and you'll have five minutes. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for listening to us. My name is Kathy Hetrick and my family and I live at 5166 Dove Court in Bettendorf. We're located in the northeast area of the Sophie Foster property. I have a lot of concerns regarding the rezoning of this property. When we went through this process previously, the property to the north was zoned commercial. And I don't think anyone in the neighborhood was happy with the outcome of that rezoning. Nobody wants businesses in their backyard, especially when they have no idea what those businesses are going to be. I ask again that the property, entire property be zoned for residential, single-family detached homes. This is consistent with the neighborhood, including the neighborhood to the west where the area is home, right up to 53rd Street. There are a lot of reasons why this would be best for the community. One is that the congestion on 53rd is already untenable. Single-family detached homes would add to the congestion. untenable. Single-family detached homes would add to the congestion, but not nearly as much as what is being proposed tonight. Second, the homes should be of the same value and type as those around it. There are no apartments or townhomes stuck within the existing single-family detached homes in the surrounding neighborhood areas. The proposed townhomes would detract from the development of the area neighborhood. Third, there's already a shortage of single-family detached homes in the area. I hear about it frequently from my realtor friends and acquaintances. I believe the reason so many people are looking at the high-end rentals is because there's no homes to purchase. As soon as one comes on the market, it's snatched up in a matter of days. There's a serious need that you people could help us fulfill. And fourth, I realize that the property is extremely expensive. However, just because a property owner doesn't want, because they want an exorbitant price for the property does not mean that they should get it. The reason we must keep going through this process over and over and over again is that in order for the property owner to get the exorbitant price as desired, developers must build more congested housing in the area. It's not fair to the homeowners who have poured their life savings into their properties. We simply want to keep the integrity of our neighborhood. And finally, I'd like to address the conditions, the proposed conditions. I'm greatly concerned that the residents who live on the Bettendorf side of the property are being given short shrift. I quote, "Buildings within 100 feet of the west property abutting existing residential line shall be limited to 35 feet in height." What about those of us on the east side of the property? We should have that same consideration. And again, car washes, gas stations, shall be prohibited west of Lakeview property, Parkway. Again, why should the east side have to have buildings over 35 feet? Why should we have to have car washes and gas stations on our side? If it's not good enough for the west side, it's not good enough for the east side. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Okay, hearing is staying, no? Okay, if you're gonna come, please let me know you're coming, so. I see a bunch who stood up, so.
Kevin Dolan with the development team. First off, I'd just once again like to thank city staff, Laura Berkeley and her team, city engineer Brian Chet, as well as Ward Alderman and Alderman at large, for their efforts over the past several months, working together on this rezoning. You know, as I told Alderman Jobin earlier today, this rezoning could be a case study in how developers and cities can work together and should work together. And because that's what it's been from day one, a collaborative process to take that initial concept, get feedback from all the various stakeholders, and continue to refine it really all the way up until about a week or so ago. And we fully realize that rezoning is a delicate process, weighing protections for neighboring residents against benefits to the city as a whole. But we also believe that in this case, the interests of the 100,000-plus residents of the City of Davenport would be best served through this rezoning for a number of reasons. There's a few that I would like to touch on, and I believe Caitlin has a few points she'd like to address as well. But the first thing, first thing I want to talk about is growth. Cities need new housing in order to grow. And they need new housing that people can afford to buy. With building materials going through the roof and interest rates starting to climb, the way to build affordable new construction housing is to increase density with townhomes and semi-detached homes. The average household income in Davenport is between $50,000 and $60,000 a year, which means the upper limit of affordability for buying a new home is right around $300,000, which coincidentally is pretty much in line with the values of the neighboring properties. And there is tremendous demand for housing in that $300,000 price point. But if you search the Quad Cities MLS for new housing in Davenport, in that range, there's almost no listings. This development will provide new townhomes and semi-detached housing at a price point that is affordable to the Davenport median household income. As well as, of course, quality townhome rentals for that large segment of the population that moves to the Quad Cities and for one reason or another, whether they're with one of our major employers, and they know they're only going to be here for a short period of time, we're providing that product as well. Another important benefit to consider, along with growth, is job creation. The National Association of Home Builders estimates that 300 year-long full-time jobs are created for every 100 new homes built. So with nearly 200 new townhomes, the residential development alone will create almost 600 full-time jobs over a period of two to three years. These are highly paid local jobs in construction and related industries. The commercial development will create another estimated 400 jobs during, during construction, not to mention dozens of permanent full-time jobs at the new commercial amenities. But while growth and tax revenue and job creations are benefits, we also recognize that the interests of the neighbors must be considered as well. And that's where I would, you know, once again, like to reiterate the spirit of compromise and collaboration that this development team has brought in working with city staff, and as well as the Alderman, to create conditions for the rezoning that protect the neighboring property owners. This development team has agreed to 16 different conditions on the property. These include cutting off vehicle access to the existing neighborhoods, adding a traffic light to 53rd to help manage traffic in that part of the city, increased setbacks, height restrictions, some use restrictions, even changing the buildings abutting the residential from townhomes to semi-attached. So we have made considerable compromises and allowed a number of different conditions in order to protect the residents' interests. And with that, I'll hand it off to Caitlin, who has a few other points to address.
Thanks, Kevin. So Kevin briefly touched the tax revenue piece of this. So the 38 acres of undeveloped farmland generates about $3,000 a year annually for the city. Our development, combined both the commercial and residential development, will annually increase taxes by over $1 million of revenue to the city. That doesn't include the increase in sales tax generated by the businesses in that area. To address some of the questions on the commercial aspect of the development and the businesses, we, while we can't disclose what businesses or exactly who they are, we plan on bringing very nice amenities to the area, including restaurants and consumer-based businesses, which will be a welcome addition to the neighborhood, being that we're right across the street as well. Additionally, we'll be extending that 10-foot walk path along 53rd Street, promoting walkability both along the corridor and to the connecting neighborhoods through sidewalks in the residential area. To address traffic, we will be putting in a traffic light at 53rd in Lakeview. In the traffic study that was done in 2018, it indicated that a traffic light would not be needed until 75% of that property was developed. That traffic study at that time did not address the need, the expanded Veterans Memorial Parkway. So there's increased connectivity through that area of town. And we feel that the added turn lanes and the traffic light will sufficiently cover any traffic requirements that come from our development. Finally, Russell and Dolan are local developers. We live and work here. Russell literally owns 30 acres to the north of this parcel. We are vested in ensuring this is a quality development. I have no doubt this will be something you all will be proud of. Finally, when voting tonight, please think of the 100-plus thousand residents in the City of Davenport and the 300-plus thousand in the Quad Cities. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Michael Ryan, 4646 East 49th Court. I have to say, I was debating whether or not to speak again. I've certainly been up here a number of times, and I've had my say regarding the traffic congestion, that this proposal will extend and exacerbate. Honestly, I appreciate that you guys want to put in a, I'm sorry, I was supposed to be addressing the council. I appreciate that the petitioners are looking to put in a traffic light. But traffic lights don't ease congestion, they create more traffic. I was just on John Deere Expressway just yesterday, and I was amazed at how smoothly all that traffic flew because it was a reduction of traffic lights. Adding more is kind of going the opposite direction. I've also talked a lot about the intensity of the commercial. I fully recognize that 53rd is an important commercial corridor. But as you look east of Utica Ridge, it's very low intensity. And we don't really need another gas station when there's three other gas stations within a matter of a few blocks of this property. And I've also talked about the sharp spike in the density, especially on the eastern border. It's going to go straight from R3 Residential to RMF, where they're going to have a very dense residential rental community right there. It's going to be in their backyards. And actually, in one case, it's actually going to be in their front yard because of the way that that house is laid out. But I finally decided to speak tonight because I've been listening to support for the development. I've also listened to what they've said here tonight. One of the main themes that I'm hearing from the non-developers that are supporting this is that they just want to get rid of that connection between 53rd and East Berry Estates. It's not that they like the development, but they just hate that idea, that connection even more. And while I, with all due respect to that ideal of connectivity, it's one that I support. I know that there's some support here on the council as well. Not all connections are positive ones, and this is one that would definitely not be positive. And I think there's another way that we can go about getting rid of that potential connection without having to go with an inappropriate development. I also wanted to speak to the developers, frequent talking about all the concessions that they've made. You know, they gave out a list that they've done, getting rid of the connection, the traffic light, which I don't really think is quite, this is the only way to go about. The setback is interesting because I, at the neighborhood meeting that Alderman Jobin held on Sunday, it really kind of came to light that my backyard is about 80 feet from the back of my house. The setback is only going to be 30 feet. So 30 feet, less than half of the distance of my backyard, there's going to be a building right there. I didn't realize that. I thought there was going to be a setback and then another setback, but it's really going to be very much not a large setback. I apologize. I've tried to not make this personal, but this is one that kind of really, I realized, really there. Other than that, there's been three major changes that I keep hearing. The height restrictions that they've agreed to, the duplexes that they've agreed instead of going with four or six plexes, and eliminating that traffic connection. But honestly, these are small changes. They're not really concessions. Going with the three-story or higher building in this area would just be wildly inappropriate. I mean, this is an infill development. This wouldn't reflect the surrounding area at all if they were going three stories. So that's kind of, that's something that plan and zone should have just imposed on them from the get-go. In regards to the duplexes, going to the duplexes opposed to the six or four plexes, the lot was, haven't really changed. So that hasn't really affected the density or the number of units that they could put in. And then as for the connection, by eliminating all those extra streets that they needed to put in, that's actually given them a lot more land to develop on. The initial plan was 51 of these single-family semi-detached houses. Now they're up to 69 of that. If they're targeting $300,000, that's over $5 million of revenue that they're doing. That's not a concession. That is something that they would have wanted to do anyway. And the developers in 2018 also wanted to get rid of that connection too. So I don't really see that as a connection. Meanwhile, the neighborhood has been asked to concede everything. And I apologize, I realize I'm trying to go quickly here. So I just feel that we're being asked to give up everything. They've made a couple of small changes. I do want to respect, I respect both of you guys.
Please finish, sir.
Yes, sir. I absolutely recognize that you guys have lots of stakeholders to hold on to, to respect and everything like that. I just, you know, helping developers is definitely a worthy goal. There are other business opportunities for them out there, helping a landowner get as much as she can.
Sir, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Scott Hughes. I live at 5129 Hamilton Court with my wife Lori and my daughter Maddie. We've lived here for 16 years. Let me be very clear. I'm not opposed to developing this property. And to be honest, our family would like to see the property developed. I believe it would benefit the community. However, I am adamantly opposed to the current commercial proposal. There are three houses on the east and three houses on the west sides of the property that the current petitioner wants to put commercial property abutted to. There's absolutely no reason the petitioner needs to bring commercial property that far south, east, and west, with the exception of gaining more commercial square footage at the detriment of these families. At the first neighborhood meeting, the petitioner stated that the commercial property on the north side of 53rd, they felt a Subway restaurant did not meet their standards for their commercial properties. At the last neighborhood meeting that the petitioners held, my wife Lori and I spoke with them, showed them where our house is located, and voiced concerns about the building, a building being so close to our property line. We do not want a building with high traffic and windows looking at our backyard. The petitioner and landbroker assured us we would love what would be back there, but of course didn't mention what. We left the meeting with hopes of, and excitement, that a commercial developer finally had Davenport neighborhood's best interests in mind. We then received an email from our Alderman asking how we felt about a Hy-Vee Fast and Fresh in our backyards. He said that the petitioner even stated they believed they spoke to a resident, and they were excited about this type of business so close. Let me be clear. We were not excited, and we were very upset about this. We were hoping for something similar to Central Standard Burger, something like that. For them to state that, we felt was very disingenuous and completely incorrect. I'm not asking you to vote no for development. I'm just asking you to vote no for this commercial property. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Pausing. Okay. Okay, there's a motion and a second for consideration. I have emails, just to remind everybody during COVID, if you send something on a particular item, I'll read them into the record. So I have a few, so I ask your indulgence. So, good afternoon. The following update of our position is provided for consideration in tonight's vote. Our position is based on additional dialogue, neighborhood meetings, negotiations with the developers, and on the proposed amended conditions of case REZ 2009, or 09. We support an affirmative vote subject to the proposed conditions. We believe that the sale of this property with the current proposed conditions finalizes the development of this piece of property to best available circumstances, including local ownership, and thereby eliminates the risk of less advantageous circumstances in the future. We appreciate that the dialogue has been conducted in a professional and civil manner. Special recognition to Alderman Jobin for his efforts and his facilitation. Thank you, Wally and Don Beck, East Berry, Davenport. Next one.
Good afternoon. I'm writing in support of the proposed residential and commercial development along East 53rd Street on the current 38-acre vacant lot. The city would benefit from the generation of additional taxes from the increase in the tax base, and it will addition, and will add additional amenities to the area for the entire community to enjoy. Thank you sincerely, Kerry Pete, Six Ward, Elm Street.
Mr. Mayor, I support the proposed housing development along 53rd Street. Housing of this sort for young professionals and people looking to purchase their first home is very hard to find in the Six Ward. The location is deal for those working in Illinois but wanting to live in Davenport. This development gives you everything you want, schools, grocery stores, pharmacies, restaurants, and access to recreational bike path right in your own neighborhood. Tom Hughes, Eagles Watch, Davenport.
Mayor Mike Mattson, Davenport City Council. We appreciate the time by our Six Ward Alderman Ben Jobin and the city council for the work navigating the rezoning request that impacts our neighborhood. Over the last six weeks, a lot of information has been shared by the petitioners, and survey results have been collected from neighbors weighing in on the process. Opinions have changed as new information becomes available, and many neighbors did not participate in the last. not participate in the last survey conducted because we had previously completed the first survey, therefore making the most recent results not reflective of the entire neighborhood. Based on all the surveys and conversations, it is my belief that the most neighbors agree that this proposed development is too much density for the surrounding neighborhood, and the increase in density is because of the exorbitant market value price asked for the land. It is also agreed that increased traffic from 53rd Street from this development through our residential neighborhood is not a good idea and would be inconsistent with the current low-density residential and elementary school community setting. We like the idea of having local developers develop the land, but it needs to be consistent and respectful to the surrounding residential area. We hope the City Council will approve a motion to amend the 2011 ordinance prohibiting conditions, connection, sorry, from East Berry Estates 51st Street and haunt from this developed area. We understand this is perhaps unlikely, and we will need to have this explained as to why this cannot happen. Thank you for the consideration. Sharon Dunn, Dave Dunn, East 48 Place. Mayor Mike Mattson and Councilmember Ben Jobin. We are writing to you today in support of the proposed development on 53rd Street east of Utica Ridge on the Sophie Land. We have lived in the Sixth Ward for six years now. The proposed development will be bringing quality-needed housing to this area, provide for additional amenities, and generate additional property tax revenues. All these things are a benefit to the community as a whole as well as the Sixth Ward. We encourage you to support along the development of this new asset in our city. With gratitude, Kristen Susan Craig, Thomas Point Road, Davenport. Dear Mr. Mayor, my name is Stephen Brandt, and my address is 1839 Westminster Circle, which is in the Sixth Ward. I'm writing in support of the, in support of the development on 53rd Street that will be discussed this evening. Davenport has a need for housing of this caliber at this location. It is a well-thought-out proposal and would bring restaurants and amenities that would be a welcome addition. The property tax generation alone, not including the additional generation of sale tax, would be positive for the city and all its residents. The developers are literally across the street from this proposed site, which would assure the city and our residents development will remain high-quality. Their proposal also considers traffic control measures, walkability for connections to existing walk paths, and making sure surrounding neighbors continue to have commensurate living conditions through both use and building height restrictions. Developments like this are good for Davenport, and I hope positive consideration for all the factors given. S. Brandt, Sixth Ward. Dear Mayor Mattson, my name is Maggie Boson, and my family resides in the Sixth Ward, 4218 Woodland Court. I'm writing in support of the proposed development project off of 53rd, across from Russell Construction headquarters that is being discussed tonight. The land is vacant farmland now, and it will inevitably be developed. It will not stay farmland forever as much as some nearby residents would prefer. My family is in favor of the possibility of new residents and amenities this development would provide. We also believe the additional property and sales tax would benefit our community as a whole. I would ask that the council consider the interests of the entire ward and not just the neighboring property owners. Thank you, Maggie Boson, Woodland Court. And then last one. Hi, Ben. We are all, hi, Ben. We are all still out of town and cannot attend the meeting tonight, and wanted to send one final email of our thoughts so that our voices are heard. It is our hope that the City Council will vote down this proposal. We reside at 5137, 5137 Hamilton Court, which is the north end of the court. Our backyard would be affected by the commercial plan of this proposal. When we purchased this home three years ago, we knew that the land behind us would be developed eventually. We researched the current agreement for the Sophie Foster Field, agreed upon by residents several years prior to us moving there, and felt that the zoning was fair and reasonable. I do not feel this request for rezoning is fair or reasonable to the residents living in the area. We have spent considerable money grading and re-landscaping our backyard and property. Like everyone else in the neighborhood, we take great pride in the curb appeal of our home. To learn that a fast food restaurant or drive-through food beverage establishment could be put right behind our property is disheartening. I don't think anyone would want this. We have concerns about the traffic, the noise, the lighting, and overall business this type of development would bring. We feel that it, that is, will greatly affect our ability to enjoy our backyard. I feel that the conditions we asked for regards to the commercial development were fair, and they were not agreed to by the developers. I understand that the developers don't have to live on the other side of the fence from this, but we do. Changing the current setbacks to this development brings all of these issues closer to our home. I am concerned about the traffic problems this proposal will create. Most afternoons and evenings, you cannot get onto, out onto 53rd from Amesbury Drive. During peak shopping seasons, it's even worse. Paul Norton cannot accommodate this amount of new residents. It took us two years to get our children into this school. Some neighbors are still waiting to get in. Others gave up and went to a different school. I am concerned about the amount of rental properties this proposal will allow for. Our neighborhood is quiet, and we do not have a great deal of police or fire department response here. We do not want this to increase. Proposal does not fit the neighborhood and will likely lower our property value and make it very difficult to sell our homes. I hope that the City Council will listen to the people living in the area and hear the reasons behind not supporting this proposal. The neighborhood is a beautiful, family-friendly area that is increasing in value each year, and we'd like to keep it that way. Respectfully, Brian and Sarah Morrissey, 5137 Hamilton Court. Thank you. Is there any discussion from Alderman? I see Alderman Jobin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a brief comment, and then I will make the motion for the amendment. I didn't know if anybody else wanted to speak first and take those, then I'll come.
Okay, so you want to let them go, and then you, yeah, I'll come back to you. Alderman Grip.
Thank you, Your Honor, for the opportunity to speak on this. So first, I'd like to start off by thanking the neighbors for participating in this process. It was highly, there was a high participation over several weeks, and you all have gone through this before, and you're engaged, and it takes a lot to come down to City Council to attend multiple neighborhood meetings. And we see that, and we appreciate that. Also, to the developers for their willingness to come to the table and make concessions and try to address the concerns of the neighbors. And then to Alderman Jobin for being the mediator and the conversation holder over these past six weeks. You've done an excellent job of leading this conversation and this process. And then, you know, I did want to say that the gentleman who spoke earlier, which I really appreciate your comments, I write down a lot of what you say, but you said you did not want it to get personal. The thing about rezonings are, rezonings are the agenda items that bring out the most people because it affects where you live, and it's hard not to get personal in rezonings. And we understand that, we appreciate that. So my points, from a strictly zoning perspective, these are appropriate land uses for the land. That was the opinion of our city staff, that was the opinion of PMZ, and after reviewing the case for six weeks, I've come to the same conclusion. It's an appropriate zoning. There's also a lot to like about the development. First is that it's a mixed-use between commercial and residential. But also, as you dig in further to that, you've got mixed use in housing type. So you have single-family detached, you've got rental, you've got owner-occupied. That is the housing stock that we need to do more of in the city as opposed to putting all of the same type of housing in the same neighborhoods. And then it's walkable. So I would imagine that the folks in the neighborhood, whether they supported it or not, in the end, if the development gets done, there will be a lot of evenings where you walk to some of the development features that would be built. This is a unique parcel, and we need to recognize it, that it has a unique history. It's been before the council several times, and at some points contentious. And the neighborhood has legitimate concerns. And a lot of these concerns were discussed with the developer, and they tried to address those. Those are building height, setbacks, particular uses within the property. We even addressed design with the outer perimeter of the single-family detached homes, of course, traffic and connectivity. Now, I will say that is the one thing about this project I do not care for, that we do not have connectivity, right? If I were king for a day, we would have connectivity to, to access points on the north side, and then east side, west side, and south side would all be connected. I know traffic conversations often get really wonky, but if we really want to deal with traffic, you need connectivity. We need to connect more streets to arterial, neighborhood streets to arterials. The number of cul-de-sacs that you all have in your neighborhood is one of the main reasons that we have bigger traffic backups, but I won't, I won't get too far into that. I understand that the developer has an idea of what they'd like to do with the land. The neighbors exercise their right with what, to have an opinion on what their neighbors should do with the land, and we came to a point where we said there are not going to be any connections on the east, west, and south side. So the result is a development with 16 conditions that tried to address both the needs of the neighborhood and the developer. And I think that we did that. I strongly support passing this rezoning, and I appreciate your time listening to me.
Thank you, Alderman Grip. Alderman Ambrose.
Thanks, Your Honor. I've been involved in probably 95% of the development on 53rd Street, so shame on me. But I think this is a great development. We got a good neighborhood with a great alderman, and a lot of these concerns the neighbors have, you know, the city has ordinance that will protect the neighborhood and the impact they have. So I think Alderman Grip spoke very clearly about it, and I feel the same way. I think it's a great project, local developers and the neighbors. It's never quite as bad as the neighborhoods assume, and so I hope we can get eight aldermen to support this.
Thank you, Alderman Ambrose. Alderman Condon.
Thank you, Your Honor. The neighborhood, the developers, Alderman Jobin and staff, you all have my thanks as well. It's been a good process, and I appreciate all the work that you guys put into it. The charge of an alderman at large is to think of a city a little bit more holistically, and I can say that this development's good for the city. And you could argue that it's good for the ward. It's really when you get down to that zoomed-in perspective of looking at the neighborhood where you really have to ask yourself what harm, if any, would come to the neighbors, and is it respectful of the existing development? And I'm comfortable saying that I prefer local developers, local jobs, local wages, local trade partners, and as they are successful in business, it gives them the ability to continue to invest in our community. So I prefer local from a financial perspective, but I also prefer local because it's helpful to know that the developers have some skin in the game as members of our community. And as I've referenced before, this development in particular doesn't just have local community members skin in the game, it's almost built in with self-preservation. In the same way that the existing neighbors don't necessarily want to look out their backyards to something they perceive as being less than their community, people who are living in the duplex may not perceive that they want to back up to a five-plex or a six-plex. And people, when they make their decision where to rent, sometimes are a little bit skeptical of backing up to commercial. So as this development builds out, it behooves them to do it well because it, again, protects their own interest. And, yeah, I echo Alderman Grip's one hesitation is I am disappointed that we lost the connectivity as well, and I look at it from not just a track, traffic perspective, but also just sort of a building neighborhoods perspective. I don't think it serves a community well to mandate that just because it's a higher density use, that they need to enter from the busier road and through a commercial development to access their housing. Good communities are reinforced when we get out of our silos that we put ourselves in and start to recognize that, you know, diversity is good. So I do wish we were able to preserve that connectivity. So I came out in favor of this project in the very first meeting because it just made sense on paper to me, the way that they were staggering things up into the commercial. It seemed like the logical, logical way to develop a property that's been of concern for the neighbors for some time. And the developers have assured me that the project that I supported in the first meeting is still the project that they intend to move forward with, and that is to say that the conditions have not watered things down for them to the point where they need to make any concessions on what they aspire to put there. And for all the reasons that I have already described about self-preservation and the additional fact that their own real estate is directly to the north of them, I take them at their word and support this project, and I think they'll do a great job of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Condon. Alderman Dormand.
Thank you, Mayor. As I heard the developers speak tonight, I thought to myself how much I realized I am probably one of the people that would, would have been in their target demographic of what they're trying to suit to here. As the youngest one on council and someone that graduated college seven years ago and entered one of those rotational programs for a large company, I knew that I was not in a position to buy a house, and yet I still wanted to be somewhere where I could have a nice home, a nice place to live, but still have walkability access to different businesses, to be able to enjoy with other people. And when you think about Davenport where that exists, it's really kind of right now only downtown. There are not too many other places around where you can have, somewhere where you could rent a apartment or a townhome-type building, have the space, and still be able to walk to many businesses, and it is a need that we have in our community. It's also one that I hope we can use this as a case study that we mentioned of how developers and development can partner with us in the city, partner with neighbors, and we can find ways to work through new development like this in other spots in the city. There are plenty of great business districts around that all have strong neighborhoods around them already established that could use some new fresh life in them that could also have development of townhomes or maybe more highly densely populated housing units, but then could also bring new business life, new growth in Davenport. And I think that's what we all are wanting to bring to Davenport is that growth and that continued success so that we aren't a dying Midwest community, we are a thriving, growing Midwest community. And I really want to thank the development team, what you guys have done of partnering with the neighbors to find ways to develop this lot of land that has sat here as an empty farm field for quite a while now. It is very appreciative, and Alderman Jobin, thank you very much for everything you've done. The amount of neighborhood meetings and time and effort you've put into it is truly something and speaks a lot to who you are and what the aldermen you are, so I appreciate that as well. I'm very supportive of this development, and I hope that we have at least eight other aldermen, if not more, that agree with me. And I'd love to hopefully have this be one of many partnerships we can have as a development team in the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Dormand. Alderwoman Lee.
Thank you. I'm going to keep mine brief because, because there's already been a lot said. I think it's important to remember that this is a request for rezoning. The development will come later, and we'll go through city staff and other, other commissions. If I remember right, the, under current zoning, the commercial is actually much larger than, than what's proposed here with the rezoning. Also, under current conditions, all the roads can be and would be connected if there was no rezoning. And these conditions that have been worked out with a very extensive collaborative and cooperative process would not be tied to the current zoning. These conditions would go with the new zoning. So I think it's, like Alderman Grip said, this is consistent with what's going on in the area. Both residential is on in the area, um, both residential as well as commercial. It is Fifty-third, after all, um, and I will support this rezoning.
Thank you, Alderman Lee. Anyone else? Very good. Alderman Jobin.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Um, briefly, um, you know, I want to say that, uh, throughout this process, uh, m- my whole philosophy has been just try to be a voice of those people that live in these neighborhoods, and, um, whether I've done a good job or bad, um, that's for them to determine at the end, and I, I want to thank a lot of people for, um, helping me through this process. First, Laura Berkeley from staff, uh, she's provided me a lot of insight, uh, through this process, and, um, I couldn't have spoken with the neighbors with half the intelligence that I have without that. Um, also, I want to thank, uh, Corporate Counsel Tom Warner, he's also provided me some great consultation, uh, throughout this. From the neighborhood standpoint, a couple of individuals that, uh, have been, uh, have been great throughout this process, gentleman that's not here that's spoke before us, uh, a couple times, Mr. Jimmy Clifford, um, that's put in a tremendous amount of work. If people think about, I've done some work through this, um, it's only about a tenth of what he's done. Uh, without him, uh, the protest rate wouldn't be where it is, uh, to provide the political clout to get some of these conditions. Um, that was a big bargaining chip to have, uh, when trying to go through all of this. Um, I also thank Michael Ryan, who spoke before us tonight. Um, him and I have had many, uh, conversations as well. Uh, he, he has a great, uh, philosophy about this, and I share, share a lot of opinions, opinions with him, and so I thank him for all of our, uh, conversations. Throughout this, you know, we've used this term, the pendulum has swung, you know, initially, that initial neighborhood meeting, I was like, no way, no how, I'm not gonna do this, and I think a lot of the neighbors were that way as well. As things have gone, this has gotten as close to a fifty-fifty opinion from the neighbors as I think I would ever sound. I would've lost, I would've lost a huge bet on that, and so, um, it's definitely made things a little bit difficult on that end for me, but, uh, again, you know, I, I've just strived to be the voice of those residents. And so with that, at the end, I want to thank, uh, a couple of local developers, you know, Kevin Dolan, Caitlin Russell, had a lot of great conversations with them throughout this. Um, I haven't always agreed with them on certain things, but that's okay. I think, uh, they've been very fair. Um, I think if we're gonna have somebody come forward, uh, to ask to rezone this land, uh, as Alderman Condon mentioned, you know, I'd rather have two well-respected community members that have some skin in the game versus, uh, what came forward in two thousand eighteen, some fly-by-night crew out of Indiana that was looking for a smash and grab. So, you know, I, I thank them for their conversations, and with that, um, I want to make a motion to amend this ordinance to include, uh, the conditions which, um, are up on the screen and have been shared through the social media outlets on our website.
So just for the record, Mr. Jobin, if you'd read, if someone would read those just for the record. I know it's a little bit of length, but...
All right, I'll look here. So, one, city council is requesting to pass a resolution amending the regional commercial and residential general land use boundaries on the Davenport, plus two, twenty thirty-five future land use map. Two, a traffic study is required, and additional traffic safety measures may be required as development occurs. Uh, jump to four, 'cause three is stricken. Uh, four, a traffic signal shall be required at the intersection of Lakeview Parkway and East Fifty-third Street. Five, the second ingress slash egress point to Fifty, Eastber- Fifty-third Street shall be required. Six, street connections to East Fifty-first Street, East Berry Estates Drive, and Hawk Drive shall be prohibited. Seven, a mult- the multi-use trail shall be extended to the West property line. Eight, a twenty-foot setback on eastern and westernmost property lines in the C-two zoning district shall be required where abutting commercial zoning districts. Nine, a thirty-foot landscape setback shall be required on the eastern, western, and southernmost property lines of the subject property where abutting residential districts. Ten, the height of structures in the R M F zoning district shall be no greater than thirty-five feet. Eleven, upon vacation by the city of a portion of East Berry Estates just to the south of the subject property, petitioners jointly and severally shall be responsible for paying for or executing the work specified by the City of Davenport for reconfiguring, redesigning, reconstructing the northern terminus of E- East Berry Estates and the area abutting the sec- southern boundary of the subject property. The city is to provide plans, including a site plan and landscaping plan, to petitioners. Twelve, townhouses and multifamily units shall be prohibited where the property abuts single-family residential. Thirteen, requirement under section sixteen point two-four point zero-four-zero C of the city code stating no cul-de-sac shall exceed six hundred feet in length and measured from the center line of the intersecting street to the termination of the right-of-way shall be waived if the petitioner provides secondary access via private ingress slash egress easement to Fifty-third Street. Fourteen, car washes, gas stations shall be prohibited west of Lakeview Parkway. Fifteen, the fence associated with the required buffer between residential and commercial shall be installed after final grading has been completed. Sixteen, buildings within a hundred feet of the West property abutting existing residential line shall be limited to thirty-five feet in height.
Is there a second? There's a second. Okay. Brian, if you put any discussion on the amendment? Seeing none? Okay, Brian, please call the roll for the amendment to this. McGinnis?
Yes.
Dorman?
Yes.
Peacock?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Yes.
Gripp?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Jobin?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
And Dickman?
Yes.
Ten yeses, Your Honor? Very good. The, all, the amendment is added. Any other, I'm just pausing, any other discussion? Okay, please call the roll on the ordinance with the amendment.
Yes.
Dorman?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
Gripp?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peacock?
Yes.
Jobin?
No.
Dunn?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
And Condon?
Yes.
Nine yeses and one no, Your Honor? Very good. The ordinance is adopted and passes. The next item, uh, second item is a third consideration of an ordinance for case O R D two-zero dash zero-two, being the request of Palmer College of Chiropractic to amend a section of the campus master plan founded by East Eleventh Street and East Tenth Street between Pershing Avenue and Perry Street from an athletic field to student housing. Is there any public with comment? Hearing and seeing none, there's a motion and a...
Second.
Second, any discussion from Alder folks? Hearing and seeing none, Brian, please call the roll. Lee?
Yes.
Gripp?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Jobin?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Yes.
Dorman?
Yes.
And Peacock?
Yes.
Ten yeses, Your Honor? Very good. That third consideration ordinance is adopted. Item three is a third consideration of an ordinance for case R O W two-zero dash zero-two, being the request of Palmer College of Chiropractic for the vacation of the public right-of-way known as East Eleventh Street between Perry Street and Pershing Avenue and a portion of an alley in block eight-nine of Claire's Eighth Edition. Is there any public with comment?
With a consideration?
Second.
Hearing and seeing no public, there's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Alderwoman McGinnis.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just wanted to say that there had been a question with a property owner there at Eleventh Street. Um, I'm happy to say that over the past, uh, weeks and the past week, and they have come to accommodation, and so I have, I heard from him yesterday, and he is okay with this going forward. Now, thank you to, uh, Laura Berkeley for, uh, her assistance with this as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman. McGinnis? Alderman Gripp?
Thank you, Your Honor. As it looks like, uh, the, the Palmer Development is going to, uh, or the rezoning is going to go through, I would like to just thank Dr. Markiore and, uh, Palmer College for your reinvestment in our city. Uh, some of us had an opportunity to see what you've already done over the past few years. Uh, it's incredible. I, I can't wait until some of these restrictions are loosened and that the community can, uh, start to see the high-end reinvestment that, uh, Palmer College is doing, uh, in the middle of Davenport. Uh, something to be proud of, uh, so, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Alderman Gripp. Alderman Condon.
Yeah, I wanted to, uh, say much of the same. Uh, the excitement from, uh, the tour that I was able to have of your, uh, remodel hasn't worn off yet, and as somebody who has, uh, lived in the Quad Cities my whole life, you don't always appreciate what's there, maybe. Uh, Palmer's an interesting campus on, on our Brady Street Hill, and it's not the, uh, sprawling, uh, yard like you think of, uh, of a typical college, but every time I go up Brady Street now, I'm, I'm a little bit more prideful and a little bit more excited about what you guys are doing there, so I hope, uh, some of that excitement can, uh, make its way out of the building and, 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 um, get absorbed by our community, because it, it really is a great thing that you guys got going there.
Thank you, Alderman Condon. Anyone else? Pausing, and I'll just make a comment. Thank you to Palmer. Uh, watched you grow for many years and, uh, expand and do good work over there, uh, 'cause I watch you every day across the street, so, uh, thank you for what you do. Okay? Uh, Brian, please call the roll on third consideration. Dunn?
Yes.
Gripp?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
Dorman?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
Peacock?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Jobin?
Yes.
And Ambrose?
Yes.
Ten yeses, Your Honor? Very good. The ordinance is adopted. Item four is a second consideration of an ordinance for case R O W two-zero dash zero-two, being the request of Palmer College of Chiropractic to vacate a portion of an alley in block ninety-six of Claire's Eighth Edition. Is there any public with comment?
With a consideration?
Hearing and seeing none, there's a motion and a...
Second.
Second, any Alder folks? Seeing none, and, um, Brian, please call the roll. Peacock?
Yes.
Dorman?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Gripp?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
And Jobin?
Yes.
Ten yeses, Your Honor? Very good. The ordinance moves to third consideration, and the committee of the whole recommends some, uh, suspension of the rules and passage now on third consideration. First, is there a motion for suspension of the rule?
Second.
There's a motion and suspension, motion and a second for suspension. Brian, please call the roll on suspension. Dorman?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Peacock?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
Jobin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Thank you. Gripp?
Yes.
Okay. Ten yeses, Your Honor? Very good. The rules are suspended, so we'll move to third consideration. Is there a message for, motion for passage of third? Motion and a second. Brian, please call the roll for third consideration. Ambrose?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Peacock?
Yes.
Dorman?
Yes.
Gripp?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
And Jobin?
Yes.
Ten yeses, Your Honor? Very good. So that ordinance is also adopted. The next item is, there a motion for approval of all items on consent? There's a motion...
Second.
And a second for consent. Brian, please call the roll on all items of consent, or on consent. Jobin?
I will abstain from the assumption April night under item number twenty, otherwise yes for all others.
Dickman?
Yes.
Peacock?
Yes.
Gripp?
Yes.
Dorman?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
And Dunn?
Yes.
Ten yeses. Wait, Jobin's abstention noted. Very good. The consent is approved. The next item is, are there any other ordinances, resolutions, or motions? There are none tonight. The next item, is there any public with business? If any public, please step to the podium, please give your name, ward, or address. If you're not from here, we'd love to know where you're from, and you'll have five minutes. Thank you.
Thanks, everyone. Uh, Bill Handel, Nashville, Tennessee, also, uh...
I didn't understand.
Ward four, Ward four of Davenport. Um, but zoning's a very important item for any city, and, uh, and I, uh, was, uh, I guess, uh, heartened by all the, uh, the input that, uh, has been taken on this, uh, fairly small piece of property, small compared to the size of Davenport, uh, as you might guess, I'm gonna be talking about our riverfront, which, uh, has always, uh, been the number one in the hearts and probably ultimately the wallets of every Davenporter. Um, and, um, I think that's an area that, uh, even though it's all city-owned property from, and I'm talking about right now from Marquette to, uh, to the, to the dam, um, all city-owned property, but, that, but, uh, if we do not think about zoning for those, that area, uh, I think we, uh, we risk not having a development that's going to be in the best interest of all the people at Davenport, and, uh, particularly what I want to, let's go back, uh, about, um, five years when, uh, the, there was a proposal by, uh, a great organization, the Gills of, of St. Louis, to, uh, repurpose the, uh, the, uh, the auxiliary, uh, barge next to the, uh, former, uh, gambling boat to make some type of a, of a group, a giant group of extravaganza. Um, and, uh, there was, uh, a lot of people thought that, you know, the Gills are very known for their quality, that it would be a, a good addition to our, our riverfront, but, um, I think the reason I think that lots of our council members, I think rightly, uh, decided not to go that route was it would exclude a portion of our populace. Uh, a lot of people would, would, probably, maybe the majority of Davenporters, we like a good time, could have enjoyed that, that development, but, um, the old lady, the, you know, the, the, the teetotaler, young kids, um, many people that just don't like that type of atmosphere would have been excluded from it, so, uh, I think that we did the right thing by, uh, by taking, you know, telling the Gills, sorry, but it isn't, it's just not for us. So, uh, how does that relate to what we're doing right now? Um, in the area between Gaines and the dam, um, let's not, let's consider whether there's been a proposal to put some type of a playground in that space. Uh, perhaps it, the idea is to make it something like, uh, what's, what, uh, is on, uh, in Chicago's, uh, lakefront. Um, so a playground, though, was, it's always a good thing, who's gonna be coming against